Mayor Cukta?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Posar?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins, at present.
So far, I think he said he would make it, but all right. First on the agenda this evening is a conditional use for permit for construction of a barn at 8240 Valley View, okay? Mike is here with us. Dave, would you like to come up, please? Have a seat. And we have some comments from our planner, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated June 9th, 2015. The applicant's proposing to construct an approximate 30 by 40 detached accessory structure on the property located at 8240 Valley View. The pole barn will be located across the yard from an existing residence and accessory structure. And it does appear, though, that the land the pole barn will be situated on is a separate parcel from the main home. The property is zoned R1 Residence District in Sections 11, 63.02H and I. The planning zoning code regulates detached accessory structures. Taking a look at that section, Section I in particular, the proposed building, is permitted subject to a conditional zoning certificate, and the commission held their public hearing this evening with no comment regarding that. And it does require that certificate because it exceeds 600 square feet in area. So, taking a look at the requirements, I have some comments regarding detached accessory structures being located in the rear yard. Again, the structure appears to be on a vacant parcel and located just behind the main building. The applicant does, however, own four separate parcels of land, and the house and the existing accessory structure are located on parcel number 3302226, which is 8193 Valley View Road. The proposed structure shown on vacant land for 8240 Valley View Road, and there are a couple other vacant parcels, parcel 3302210, which is about 4.82 acres, and parcel 3300716, which is a half acre. For this proposal to be approved, I believe the applicant will need to combine parcels 3302226, 3300368, and 3300716. And I reference Section 113302D, accessory structures cannot be located on vacant land without a main building. Parcel 3302210 should also be considered for combination, and that would make all the parcels combined into one lot. But that may not be necessary if that particular parcel is code compliant, left on its own. The other issue that I noted in my report regarding accessory buildings located on large lots, they can be permitted in the front or side yards on lots three acres or more, provided they're located 150 feet from the street. This particular application shows the building, proposed building, about 139 feet from the street. That's according to the site plan. I don't think there's any issue, given the size of the property, to move it back the 11 feet to be compliant with the code. Absent that action, of course, the applicant could seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeal. And then the remaining item I noted, and I believe is compliant, and particularly had some conversation with the Assistant Building Commissioner this evening, but the maximum height of accessory structures shall not exceed 15 feet, or the height of the main building, whichever is less, and no greater than one story. It appears that the attic height on this is shown 11 feet 10 inches, but the building is taller than that measurement. And it sounds like from...
It's still about 18 feet tall.
About 18 feet tall. So, the commission can approve large, larger accessory structures, again pursuant to the code, but that is something that you would want to, if approving this this evening, you would want to note that in your approval, that you're also approving the height of the structure. I have no further comments.
That's it? All right. Are there any other comments? Questions, comments from the commission?
Is moving back 11 feet a problem?
It shouldn't be a problem. I know he's got his fence in there now, but I don't see that causing any impacts on...
The... Is the height of the building, is he planning on doing some work in there?
It's storage for hay. He's gonna have cows, and that's where he's planning on putting his feed for the cows.
So, if you bring the building down three feet to 15 feet, then does that mean you're gonna have to lower the interior ceiling height?
Well, if it's interior, we need to keep the height just to, you know, get the tractors in and out.
Right, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah. We have beams running through to carry the load because of the weight of the hay.
Always gonna put the hay in the top, on the mound.
Lot, yeah.
It's gonna be a lot.
It's gonna be a lot.
Barry?
In the past, last year, there was one up on Melody, and you proved the height the same time as the building oversights?
And we did.
Yes.
Yeah. It seems such a big parcel that I don't see it as being an issue.
And it truly is gonna be used as a barn for animals, so...
That, joining the lots together, Brian, I'm not understanding. Could you please explain it to me? Is it necessary or not necessary?
I do think it is necessary, because the code does say that you can't have an accessory structure on a vacant parcel without a main building. In this case, it will be located on a parcel without a principal structure. So, if you combine the parcels together, it would be on a property with a main structure, and you'd have two accessory structures, which is allowable by code.
Isn't the havel check issue all over? I thought we changed...
Agricultural, that was just, I wanted to say the zoning was changed on the property. If that's agricultural, that's a change, or it's not residential, so does that fall under different requirement?
I think you're, are you referring to the tax exemption through the county for the agricultural use?
Right.
You still would have to maintain local zoning, so it wouldn't impact that.
We had a case with havel check, and I think the end result was that it was allowed to, his barn was allowed to remain even though there was no main structure as such.
I do recall that that was an issue that maybe had gone in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then there was a code amendment that was proposed. I don't know the status of that amendment, but I think the code amendment was to allow accessory structures on vacant land without a principal structure. I don't know, however, if that was ever amended into the code. If it was, then this is acceptable.
It's not an issue.
It wasn't amended?
Dennis?
It was.
Any help with that?
I'm looking for, see if we just got the updates. I'm looking to see if it was included yet.
So, that might not be an issue. But that was, we can't remember exactly if that was changed, the law was changed, or whether he was given a variance.
I know the parcels were separated to be agricultural on that for tax purposes, and to be able to do what he was doing for that. That was one of the reasons he had it split off.
Okay, so there's a reason behind it being separate, and that's not an option, bringing them back together.
Right.
You, Mr. Mayor, you can, through Summit County, you can have a single parcel with separate tax numbers. So, if the issue is truly one for tax purposes, that can be dealt with at the county level. What I'm proposing is that the parcels be physically combined, so there's only one parcel line. But again, if that amendment was made through council and legislatively the code changed, then it would be a moot point.
Yeah, it might have been passed. Like, it was passed by the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that means a variance was given. And then we went back, and there were so many things that happened, Dave.
Right.
Wasn't there one on Shepherd, that they had to combine property to put up a barn in order to meet the requirements for distances from property line?
I also found a very good point, because you had so many acres per animal, or there was some information on that that we went through, and that same thing with one people having horses, and it was a minimum of, and I don't know what the, it was like one acre per two horses or something like that.
And that's very common. The request this evening, I didn't look at it for a use issue. I think the use is acceptable. I just looked at it from the structure itself and the combination of the lots.
But that may also play a part in combining the lots.
It may.
I think there's a distance regulation in there for types of animals and how far property line. Maybe we've got chickens and goats.
Well... Do we have enough to go on tonight where we can move forward so they don't have to come back again?
I mean, that issue seems like it could be a conditional approval of either, you know, approved as it is if, you know, research shows that it's not an issue anymore, unless it's all equipped.
That would be good.
And if it's not, either the lots have to be combined or there's a variance.
Conditional approval? We'll get it done tonight, and then we'll have to look into it, see where we go from there.
We have to amend, then we're accepting the 18-foot high.
I'm working with them. It's for a barn. Especially on property.
Right. 150 feet off the road, it's on 5A.
Anyone notice?
Asking for 40 foot?
Yeah.
30 feet is not gonna be a problem. All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the 18 feet and approve the application initially, based on further determination on the number of issues.
Okay, and that would be the lots combined. Should I have to get that? We're good?
And that includes moving it back 11 feet. Mr. Mike, it was, no, there's a problem.
Yeah.
I'm sure, but I don't foresee a problem with that.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Close. There you go. Thank you. See you next week. Two inches of rain an hour, I don't know. Okay. At least the calves aren't going in. I don't have to be nervous about that. Next is proposed signage for silver coat lamination.
The latecomer, is he?
Hi, how you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. You? I'm good. Thank you. You've got a few of those on sale.
Yeah, I sure do. I got a collection there that's about that high.
Say, oh, we should retire this a place else, right?
No, 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 that's good. You're bringing us something that shows some other business. All right. Brian, did you have anything on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. My memo dated June 10th, 2015, regarding the signage request. The applicant's requesting to recoup signage for their tenant space located at 9600 Valley View Road. Property is zoned, limited industrial. Does have existing tenants, TPC wire and guardian building products with signage already on the property. There's an existing ground sign that contains space for three tenants. The proposal is to have a panel that would go in and occupy that last space. And then the other signs being requested are two small wall signs, 6.06 square feet apiece, and then a 4.16-foot tall instructional sign to direct customers to the entrance for this particular business. One wall sign will be placed over the dock door, and then the others placed over the front door leading to the unit. That particular sign will replace the existing awning over the door. Section 117903F2 of the code permits two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of building frontage. The tenant space or frontage for this particular tenant space is unknown, but it's certainly wide enough, just looking at it, to accommodate six square foot sign area being proposed. The exact dimensions should be confirmed, though, by the applicant for the record. And the issue in my mind really isn't the area of the wall signs, but rather the fact that the proposal includes two wall signs. 117903C of the code states that only one sign is permitted per building frontage. This is an issue that the commission has taken up a number of times in the past, and it ruled that if an applicant wants more than one sign per frontage, that they would need to get a variance for that. So, the two wall signs being proposed are, they're very close in proximity and on the same frontage. It seems reasonable to locate only one wall sign, and a location could be on the wall and above the entrance door, and eliminate the sign above the dock, again, because they are very close. If the applicant desires both signs, they would need to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Regarding the tenant panel sign, that sign's acceptable, and the instructional sign is exempt pursuant to Section 1179058, A through D, as determined by the building commissioner. And just my take from the perspective of the building commissioner's review of this, that the instructional sign is exempt, but the commission should confirm this with the building department. And that's all I have.
Anything else, Dennis?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's my understanding that part of this through an occupancy inspection, that silver coat is just a new name for guardian. It's no longer guardian. It's just they're either bought, sold, or purged. So, the silver coat is replacing guardian?
Name's it.
Correct.
And the frontage is about 300 feet, it's a little over 300 feet, counting the dock doors and all.
And that's for the whole, that's all one tenant space?
Correct, and, yeah, correct. And they're asking, and the reason they ask for that other one down above the docks is to try and justify the other doors, or their doors, for truck drivers.
Yeah, there's a lot of docks there.
Correct.
So, does that change?
Well, you're technically only allowed to have one per, I mean, I agree, it's a huge frontage, and it's only one tenant in there?
There's actually three tenants in there.
Right.
But they're taking over for the other, the name change is taking over. And so, all that area that they had before will now be silver coat that's in there. And the people still in the front are there, and the ones around the corner are still there.
Okay. As part of the confusion to that, that Insight really owns the building?
Correct.
So, TPC wire is unit A. So, when guardian went in all the way at the north end of the building, they made that unit B. So, now Capital Tire is in the middle, and that's unit C. So, they have truck to learn TPC wire, Capital Tire, and silver coat.
Yeah, they don't want any large sign, and I understand the code, and that's why they're only wanting 3x6s to justify the one of the entrance. And the reason that one sign is going in is they're taking that awning down, because people are standing there smoking, and they don't want them smoking at the building. And they're taking the awning down, forcing them to go out.
Yeah, they got some strict requirements in there for the workers.
And so, they're taking that awning down, so the workers don't smoke there, but they're asking for that other 3x6 down along the docks for the truck drivers.
And there is a small section that's left between Capital Tire and TPC wire.
That is...
And I don't know if that'll be unit E, or either TPC wire takes it, or Capital Tire sucks into that, but yeah.
There's a big dock area back there still.
We're wondering maybe if, to avoid a variance in the issue of two on one frontage, maybe you could do a name plate over the door, a small name plate, and then have the other larger sign over the dock door.
Very reasonable. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that that's allowable in here. I just wanted to take a second.
There's a unit number over that entrance door.
Correct. B, and then we're gonna take the place of that one and leave the B there, just put the thing over where the awning is going.
Yeah.
So, the B is still there.
And so, it's allowable...
Please don't change that.
Oops, sorry.
Please don't change the unit.
No, we're not going to. No, sir.
A name plate's allowable, but it's small. It's only two square feet. So, it'd be right over the door, basically, a two-square-foot name plate. And then you could increase the size or the area of the sign over the dock door if you want. You certainly have the frontage to do that.
Right, right.
And that would remove you from a variance situation.
There we go.
That'd be a good compromise.
It's informational, I mean...
Yeah.
Right. And I can take that to them with no problems, and let them know that they just put that name plate right there, basically 1x2, put it there, and then put the 3x6 down under the docks. We would have no issues with it.
Right.
Yep.
I have good information to take back to them, and I think that's a good fix for our situation without one variance.
Well, that's how it's gonna be worked, if something, it'll give me a motion.
Take a motion to approve the package with the changes as discussed, putting the larger sign over the docks and a small name plate over the door. I guess we can conditionally maybe update the submittal, so they put something, they can, you know, they can sign on it, put in the file, so they've got the right stuff.
Yep.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Close.
I didn't expect you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'll get that over to you in an email.
Just through the building department, and they'll, they can confirm.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anytime.
We'll see on the message.
You bet. All right. Proposed signage for Gino's Auto and Truck Sales. How you doing?
Good, guy.
Yeah, you are. Are you going?
That's me.
That's you. Okay, Gino. Do we have comments on this, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated June 9th. The applicant's requesting a 4x4 or 16-square-foot total wall sign, and this is for the property 8581 Freeway Drive. Reviewed the sign for compliance with Section 117903F2 of the planning zoning code. Again, as we know, permits two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of frontage. The frontage on this building is approximately 80 feet, which would allow up to 160 square feet of identification signage. So, 16 square feet is not an issue. I had made the comment that, you know, much is unknown about the size in terms of what it is, the color, the material, illumination, all that. And typically, the planning commission's provided with a specification sheet from the installer or manufacturer of the sign. So, at this time, I believe the request should be considered for tabling, although I think that maybe the applicant submitted some information today that the commission may have, and I think I see it in your hands, that this is what the applicant is proposing. So, it's up to the commission area-wise, the sign is fine. So, it's up to the commission regarding the type of sign.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments? From the commission?
Is this, the sign that we have here is this one where you can just slide the letters in and change them from?
Pardon me?
Is this the sign that you proposed?
Yeah.
Is this a sign where you just slide the letters in and out?
I got them boxed in, though, so they can't come out. But it's basically, yeah.
Okay. Is it illuminated from behind, or is there light?
No, no.
I mean, I don't think we've ever had a sign in this, you know, city. So, you know, I think it needs to be a more, you know, professionally done permanent sign. This is kind of like a temporary sign for like, you know, you see it for an advertisement along the road or something that's gonna be up for a couple weeks or less.
Anybody else?
No, I agree. Leaves a lot to be desired compared to what we require from other businesses in town.
Is this already on the building now?
No, I got it. I took that down for my, when I was in Bedford.
Okay. I was just curious what about the particle board behind it? That's, that's all.
Okay. They made that out of, uh, abents, treated, and I made the borders with, they make this stuff for drywall, for corners, last, and all that. And it lasted a long time out in Bedford, 13 years.
Okay. What about the mounting of this sign? Is that going on in the building, Brian?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I believe it is a wall-mounted sign. I don't know how it's being mounted. You know, those are, again, just going back, that typically we get like a specification sheet that'll show how it's mounted, and the side returns, and that gives the city some record of the product that's going on in the building. So, anybody ever could go back and say, well, what type of sign was it, and how was it mounted to the building? They would have record of that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
Have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? All right. Close. All right, Gino, you're gonna have to come back to our building department with something better.
Something better. Okay.
Signers are a big issue in Massonia. If you look in, there's no sign.
I originally had one that I made out of wooden letters.
All right.
You know? Then I went this way.
Well, this one won't cut it, and the wooden letter ones, you'd have to have a picture of that, what it looks like, color, all those things, and give all that information to the building department. We'll go with that. Just, not this one. Okay?
Say so.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thank you.
Next is proposed streetlight modification for the enclave, Lake. That Massonia is located at 8282 Lake U. Right. Brian?
I have no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What comments I was reading, but this is not a new thing in our city, it's...
We have comments from Nick.
From Nick? Okay. Then let's go with Nick, please, Chanel.
The engineering department has reviewed the request modification pertaining to streetlights by enclave. A similar request to install direct light poles was made several years ago by the developer of Canyon Woods subdivision. I'm not aware of any problems or issues with the past requests. A point of differentiation this time is the request to install lighting on one side of the street as opposed to alternating poles on opposite sides of the street. This may affect the desired level of pavement illumination. The desired level of lighting for residential streets should be approximately .4-foot candles. Several areas of pavement appear to be below the .4 FC illumination level as indicated on the proposed photometric plan. Perhaps reducing the distance between proposed light poles will remedy the issue. I'm available for further discussion as the commission's request.
Dennis, how about the look at this? This is matching what's on the houses, everything.
Yes, from my understanding, yes. It matches what was, aesthetically, what was done up at Canyon Woods.
All right. So, our only concern at this point would be...
Is the light levels.
Light levels.
Which I think would be pretty important in an apartment situation. Think we need to make sure the light levels are appropriate.
Well, there's nobody here from that that we can talk to. We have a couple options. We could table it, or we could pass it with the condition that the lighting be sufficient. Anything else?
I'd just say, Mr. Mayor, I think that's what Nick Feeny is saying, is that the desired light, lighting level should at least be the .4-foot candles. In some case, they're below the .4 shown on the plan. So, it seems to me that if it was at .4 or above throughout the development, it sounds like Nick Feeny would find that acceptable, if the commission found that acceptable.
All right, so let's make it conditional. I'm gonna go for that.
If it's conditional, how would we know it actually goes above .4?
That certainly could be done administratively by the engineer to confirm, and he could...
Just get a new plan.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. There would be a new plan submitted, and you would then make the determinations.
Yeah, Nick would look at it and send them over to you.
And don't have to come back.
Essentially, they're gonna have to add some poles to get that.
Right, right.
Can they increase the luminance? Can they increase the light?
They could. They could, they could lower it.
No, I mean, increase it brighter.
They could. They could try that as an option as well.
Just so it's .4.
That's right, yeah, just so it's .4. I don't know what your technical spec, I had not seen that prior, but, I mean, the, to get the desired lighting levels, you either add the number of poles, increase the height of the light, and then increase the level of the bulb, you know, the brightness or intensity of the bulb, or reduce it and space them out differently. So, there's a number of ways they can do it, but to achieve the .4 is, I think, the overall issue.
Probably add more poles that they're going with, right? Same poles that have certain fixtures, certain...
Right.
Closer get them in.
Yeah.
Or are you...
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, and we approve with the condition that the illumination levels meet the city engineers' requirements.
Do I have a second? Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Close. Okay, approved conditionally. Anything else this evening? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you. One more, commissioners. One more thing to adjourn. I was about the ugliest sign I've ever seen.
You guys did a good job.